Good Natalie?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, it is 5:30 on February 26th, 2025. I'll call this meeting in the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Where did the flag go?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Buckley.
Yep, I'm here.
Jackie's online. Braun is absent. Berger also absent. Rohr?
Here.
Tomac?
Here.
Wald is absent. Zachmeyer?
Yes.
L?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, approval of tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for February 26th.
Second.
Natalie, just a question, the Schock subdivision?
Yep.
Is that?
So I have a, um, one plat that got stapled in your packet, um, but it's, the one that is loose is the one to be looking at.
Okay, so no change to anything?
No, well, um, not to the agenda. It's just one attachment is updated.
Got it. Okay, um, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Agenda is approved and approval of the minutes from December 18th and January 22nd.
I move to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Minutes are approved. Item number one, Natalie.
Our first item is the Backhouse subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of Section 3 and the northeast quarter of Section 4, Township 139, Range 85 West. This is located about two miles north of New Salem on 36th Street. The applicants are Troy and Cree Nelson. They are looking to divide off, um, close to seven acres here. It is essentially a hill. Um, the section line goes over it, but it's not traversable. So, um, there's a trail that's been used to go around, um, for the section line. They're not vacating the section lines, they're just leaving those as is, but essentially the neighbors have been using this piece of property for ag purposes and, um, they're just breaking it off to transfer it to the neighbors. Um, the intention is to move from ag to estate zoning. So because it cuts across a section line, uh, it's going to have to be in two separate parcels, but again, estate doesn't have any, um, by right entitlement for a home or anything, they just are going to continue to graze it. Um, but they are dedicating 66 feet formally, um, for the jogging of the section line. So that's about it. Uh, staff is recommending approval and I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie? I'll switch back to Jackie. Any questions for Natalie? Okay, not seeing any. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Second call for the hearing. Third and final call and I will close the hearing. Ready for motion?
I move to recommend approval of the final plot of the sort, short form subdivision, no, it's a Backus subdivision and a zoning map amendment for agricultural to estate as a subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to land use priorities established in the 2045 comprehensive plan.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Our second item is the Schock subdivision. This is in the east half of Section 35, Township 139 North, Range 82 West. This is located along County Road 82. So, uh, County Road 82 curves down here. This is the Mandan landfill. Um, this is an existing Mustang subdivision. Um, the applicants are Eldon Jr. Schock and the Leo Klein family partnership. So, the applicant recently bought this tract that appears as agricultural, um, from the sellers and they are including City of Mandan, um, which owns the landfill so that they could clean up, um, some parcel lines and dedicate right of way. So, um, essentially there was no corridor for 82 before. They're dedicating the 150 feet of right of way to provide that corridor. Um, this corner of the landfill lot, um, kind of went straight north and they are adjusting that lot line and then, um, again, providing that right of way. They are providing utility easements, um, 40 feet on the side that the water line runs on and then 20 feet on the other side. They would like to break off one residential lot of about six and a half acres. This area of the county, um, in our long range plan, we have designated that not to have additional residential development, obviously because there's a landfill there. Um, but in the areas of the county that are designated to remain ag, we do allow maximum of four buildable lots per quarter section, so that would technically be allowable here. So, just to give you a sense, um, you can kind of see these two fence posts there. That would be the approach for the residential lot. So it is flat, um, the rest of it is kind of hilly, so this is, it's viable in terms of terrain to, um, you know, put a house on top of, but the landfill, the fence for the landfill is, it's right there. Uh, and I did talk about that with the applicant. They said they absolutely know, uh, what they're signing up for. So, um, we did bring this to the road commission just for any comments and they said they don't have trouble with it. Um, they had the same reservations as staff that, um, I can't say, I think it's a great idea to make a residential lot across from the landfill. But if the applicant really wants to do this, I guess, I mean, my official recommendation is to say yes, it's okay, but, um, the road commission suggested, and I would agree, they make a covenant that runs with the land, something very simple that gets recorded that says whoever owns this property will never complain to the county about, um, impacts from the landfill on this residential lot. They were, they are not going to ask for special treatment or special consideration, um, in terms of the road. You know, they don't want to be on a road that has that much traffic or just garbage blowing or anything else. Um, so that, just something to the extent that they will not, um, complain about it and that will run with, uh, with the land. So with that, staff does recommend approval with that one condition and I can take any questions.
Chairman, Natalie, was it someone out there, the Langgang land?
That's a little bit further south.
Oh, that's further south, okay.
Yeah, just a little. And to be fair, so this is very close also to the landfill, um, that the Langgang subdivision was approved, I want to say maybe 2019, 2020, somewhere back there. So we have, we have allowed it in the past.
Yeah, I know, uh, there's been some issues between the city and, and Mr. Langgang when that cleaning up and, and the city's trying to be, from my knowledge anyway, fairly accommodating and they've sent people over. You know, they got some people, who used to be from industrial school, come over there and help clean up. So the, the city does make some accommodations within reason, you know, but when you live next to that, that deal, especially if you get the northwest wind, you're going to get more debris.
Right.
And, uh, it's, it's just not that the, the city ignores, but I know the city works with those property owners to, to the best of their resources to, to help along that area.
Sure.
Other questions for Natalie? Switch back to Jackie.
Mr. Chairman, this type of covenant, is it even legally enforceable?
I think it's more so the purpose of it is so that it's on record so that anyone who might buy it in the future, at least when they're doing their title search, that it's findable, um, that's, I think that's more so what it's for, just that anybody who's buying it understands, I don't know, some people want to buy something sight unseen. I mean, you're not going to stop someone from making a phone call, but basically that, you know, if a complaint comes in, there's a context in which it's processed, I guess.
Uh, 'cause I'm just not seeing it as being enforceable. I do agree there should be some type of statement all over this documentation. You are building a house across the road from a landfill and the county has received, you know, numerous complaints, sometimes even the city about washboarding and the nails and isn't anything that this board hasn't heard or, you know, Commissioner Rohr hasn't even heard or Chief Rohr. I'm not comfortable with it as a covenant because I don't see it being in any way enforceable.
Mr. Chairman, um, maybe if the wording were different, you know, you can't stop them from complaining, of course, but that, um, if complaints are made about that proximity, the county will not give any special consideration above and beyond what they would to any other property in the county.
So Natalie, I think my thought is along the lines of Andy's, I always view us as trying to stay away from covenants because we can't enforce them and we can't make them maintain those covenants. I mean, if you create a covenant, you can also remove it, right? I don't think we can mandate they adopt a covenant that they can't just modify or remove after this is approved.
You can make as part of the covenants, and we did for Honey Hills, that they can't change it without the permission of the county. So you can do that, but again, I think-
But we can't do that, right? We can, we would, we, so we would withhold approval until they put that into place, right? That, I guess that's what you're suggesting. They can't, can't record the plat until we've seen that.
Right.
Okay.
And again, that was just a suggestion. You know, certainly the county gets complaints, you know, we, we sort of prioritize and assess and figure out, well, we can, you know, what assistance we can give or what assistance we can't. It's just, I guess, I would suggest it's such a conflict. It's really not, you, I mean, I think it's just about guaranteed when you have a conflict that's that close. Sometime in the future, there's going to be complaints and if it, you know, if you get into something where it becomes a liability just that someone has signed off and they were aware that they were moving to a nuisance. It, I, I think it's just good to have something on file and as to enforceability, I mean, there's no, it's not as if you're recording a covenant that has, um, penalties. It's just, uh, everyone's on notice that there's a nuisance here and that the parties who initiated moving to the nuisance were well aware and make every property owner after themselves well aware. I think that's the main purpose of it is awareness.
Chairman Natalie, this, there's a strong relationship between this and down at Marina Bay, you know, where you have the, I call it, you know, the stink plant or the waste of water plant, you know, and-
Yet another moving to the nuisance.
And, uh, you know, people move around and, you know, and it's, they, uh, they get upset by different things and, but that was there before they were. And I, you know, sometimes, I don't know if they're just not aware, but they, they should be made aware and they should have known, okay, in certain times you, you might have this particular problem of odor, but I think there should be, definitely be an awareness to people that are going within a certain locality that, hey, this condition exists here, be aware of it.
Ms. Chairman also, you know, afraid of the, eventually, 'cause nobody lives forever and nothing changes land faster than death and divorce. And eventually a future landowner then is going to want some type of an abatement for being next to that landfill. That, that, this, this one will be coming back sooner or later through the abatement process or some other process, evidence of any type of, uh, contaminated groundwater leakage coming off the site. And it will be all back, back here dealing with it.
That could also be something that's added in that people are on notice, the county's not going to grant an abatement based on that factor. You know, you can't predict all factors that might come into play in the future, but that an abatement wouldn't be granted simply for the fact that it is next to a nuisance.
Other questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chair, I do have one. Um, was the city formally consulted about this at all, like the city engineering department or anything?
They signed the application.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they are well aware of what's happening here and they were, they had plenty of time to evaluate it.
And consider, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure.
Anything else?
Ms. Chairman, what's the life expectancy of that facility? I know there isn't a whole lot of room left out there.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I asked the city and they said planned through 2060 and working on potential solutions so that it could be used indefinitely.
At least 25 years.
Yes.
At a minimum.
Minimum.
Anything else? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Just come up to the podium and state your name, please.
My name's Pat Canol. I'm a neighbor to him out there. And I just have one question. I have no problem with the one house going in, but she made the remark that there could be up to four lots in a deal like this. Is that something you would consider or is that?
So that's the, just the policy in, in areas that aren't planned for a higher density. We allow up to, essentially up to four residences per quarter section.
Say later on somebody could come in and ask to do that or would you have to rezone it or what?
Yeah, so I think it's a, with the current proposal, yeah, you can take it Natalie, but there would essentially be two buildable lots here. Is that fair?
So, we evaluate on a kind of a case by case basis, just the fact that there's a landfill there, um, you know, it's taking up most of the quarter, at least half of it. That's already an industrial use, I mean, that's one consideration. I guess my approach to it would be, I would suggest not adding any more. The applicant, they're asking for a residential lot, they're giving something, they're giving right of way, they're giving some land for the landfill to correct an access issue. If that were not being offered, I would suggest it's not an appropriate location for more residential lots.
Thanks, Pat. Second call for the hearing.
I was just going to say, this is, and I had, what's happened to me, I couldn't, there, Shane, you sit your man down. If there was any other questions, I heard most of them, I got cut off for a little bit, but if there was anything you needed from the city of Mandan.
Any questions for Shane? Not right now Shane, we'll let you know if, if we have something. Thanks.
Uh, I'm doing your, Shuck, I'm the applicant out there that's purchasing the land or whatever. Got a few questions for you guys. Talked to Natalie on the situation and, um, also Mark, we've had a lot of discussion on it and, um, a few questions for you guys. Andy, uh, I guess just to understand what you were thinking, uh, about putting that, verbiage in there along that road, how that would be enforced. Are you saying that that would not, it'd be hard to enforce that just along that section? I know that's a recommendation that Natalie had or whatever, so I, I guess I would like to know from the board if, if that's what you guys were thinking. And on the second question is, um, you know, you guys, you, somebody mentioned something about leakage, you know, from the landfill or whatever. Is that a possibility? Is, is that potential? Absolutely. Anything that, you know, is gonna, you know, be there is, got that possibility or whatever. We're well aware of the road out there, you guys as county commissioners, we've all complained about that road for years, you know, so we do know what we're getting into. Me and Pat are neighbors out there, you know, uh, where the proposed house would be, that lot that we want to put out there, that six acre lot is something that I'm putting out there for my daughter. So we are well aware of the road, the garbage and everything else that goes along with it, I guess. Back to Natalie's, uh, question on us signing a, an amendment or whatever you want to consider it about, you know, uh, so the future person that would ever own that land, you know, if somebody would ever sell it someday, you know, that they are aware of what's going on with, with the land. It's like, where are you gonna stop that? Are you gonna stop it just at that section? Are you gonna make it two miles? Are you gonna make it three miles? You know what I'm saying? I mean, eventually, if you do it to one person, you'd almost have to go all the way out to the highway. You know what I'm saying? If that makes sense to you guys? So that's a couple of questions, I guess. I don't know if you guys got any questions for me as of right now or?
Any questions? Andy, you have anything?
Well, I'm not, the part about, uh, signing some type of an agreement will not request special assistance or special consideration, I'm just not seeing that happening. I'm not even seeing, I don't even see how that could be enforceable. 'Cause sooner or later, there's gonna have to be something and it'll be, you know, my family ran down that road and because of other complaints we've had on that road, hit nails, hit shingles that had nails in them, blew a tire, lost control, ended up in the ditch. Who's liable? And the dust complaints from the past, from neighbors in the area, the garbage complaints in the past, from the neighbors in the area, and I'm blaming Mandan, I mean, landfill's been there a long time. You know, we're gonna still get complaints. The only thing I can think of is big red warning labels all over this that you are building next to a landfill and you are taking your own risks. But there's nothing here that's gonna all of a sudden release Mandan from liability if there's leakage. Nothing. And then, you know, the, the, all of a sudden it'll be, well, you guys didn't put your liner in right or this wasn't done right or that wasn't done right. There, there is nothing here that all of a sudden would give the city of Mandan the safety that they're not liable for what drifts off that property. And I'm not seeing where all of a sudden the county isn't all of a sudden liable for something to include a future argument about why did the county allow it to happen in the first place? No different than allowing people to build in floodplains. Why did the county and everybody allow it to happen in the first place? But then, you know, some of the same arguments you hear even from the city of Mandan in those high end residential areas or even from Burley County, uh, when they were across the river from the old Heskett Power Plant. What, you didn't see the big red Kiss livestock building when you moved there? You didn't see the huge smoke stacks from the refinery and Heskett Power Plant when you were building your house? When you were measuring out your house, you didn't hear the hum of the power plant across the river? And now you want abatement and special consideration? You, you didn't do your homework, you didn't realize? That's what worries me on this one and I'm just not seeing this as, this language about not requesting special assistance, special consideration, isn't going to stop. The only thing would be is big, bold, red letters on this that says you are building across from a landfill. Be aware. And that might give the county some insulation, but in the city, some insulation, but probably not much.
So, I, I, Andy? So, just so I understand, you're, you're more worried about the verbiage she wants to put in there versus approving it. Is that, is that where I kind of see you're going?
I, I don't, I, I don't feel comfortable approving it, but there needs to be the warning message. I just don't like this one here because it doesn't stop. If all of a sudden somebody can prove some type of liability, that this isn't going to erase the liability. The only thing I can think of is this big, some type of big warning statement. You are building across from a landfill. There are inherent risks. You have chose to don't do this and it's written right on the plot in some way. Because it doesn't release the county or the city from liability. Other than you knew about, it was on the plot, you signed it. And then if it goes to sell the next time, then it would be, well, you know, we spent $200,000 on the house, but now we can't get $150,000 from it because nobody wants to live next to the landfill. We want an abatement. And then the county can say, well, remember, it's right here on the plot. You knew what you were doing when you built the house. And then it does sell, that next person comes in, well, now I want the abatement. Well, you know what? You knew it. It was well written in big letters. It's across from a landfill.
And you also gotta look at the previous people that are out there also, which I'm assuming you guys know there is a development out there which is less than a quarter mile away from it, you know?
And they complain.
Absolutely. I'm one of them. We all have. There ain't a person out there that hasn't called in about the road or about the garbage. You know what I'm saying?
But Chairman Andy, there is a legal concept called buyer beware.
Oh, I know it.
And buyer beware is, does the threat liability on, on the surrounding, throws the liability or the knowledge of, of a potential problem on, on the person that should have been aware of certain hazards, whatever have you. So people, and if you say, well, we can't let you do that, then the other argument says, well, just me, you're denying us of our right to make our own choices and we can't do that either.
Well, I mean, kind of like Natalie said and Mark, I mean, you talked about the stink plant down there in Marina Bay, you know? I mean, we're building million dollar houses down there, everybody's aware of it and yet you probably get a complaint once a week from down there. Maybe not, I, I'm not familiar, you know, about the smell, you know?
I live a block away from it.
Yeah, do you? You know?
But I, I don't get so much. But I, I don't get so much the, the wind from the south, but, yeah, but, you know, no, it's, I knew that when I moved down.
I do understand, and, and I, I appreciate you, you know, your opinion, Andy, or whatever. I mean, I do know what I'm getting into out there, trust me. I've been there for 20-some years. But, yeah, I've picked up garbage, I've smelled things coming over the hill. I, I realize what we're going into, you know what I'm saying? So...
I would add, I'm sure the city has, you can ask the others, you know, Sean, but I believe the city does do environmental studies from time to time.
I, I guess I'm not aware if they do or not, I'm not, I would not know that.
To double-check, make sure, you know, that certain, like, underground situations aren't creating problems for the people in the area. I would, I may be wrong there, but I, I was presuming that that might be the case.
Go ahead, Shane.
You're correct.
No, Shane confirmed that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Do a final call for the hearing.
One other thing, I guess, yeah, that we mentioned or whatever. If Natalie can pull up the map there or whatever, where that lot is, if you can. Can you zoom in to where, but you don't have to say, take a lot on there, but do it. Can you, can you go to the plat, there you go, perfect. So if you guys can, I don't know if I can do this, pass backwards or whatever you do it. But whatever, I mean, right here's the road that you guys can see here, right? Coming along in here, there's a little bit of a draw, like, right back in here. And I mean, that's kinda the proposed location. I mean, obviously, we're not gonna put the house on top of the hill because who wants to see the landfill, you know? Because, I mean, if there wouldn't be a place we could hide the house, we wouldn't even consider it, you know? But there's a little draw there, is basically where we would, you know, build the house there, and it's gonna blanket us basically from the landfill. I mean, the house won't be able to see the landfill or whatever, so that's a definitely a big plus for us. I mean, that's why we put that lot there specifically or whatever, you know, versus moving it north or south, so...
Any questions? Thanks. Okay, final call for the hearing. I will close the hearing. Natalie, one question I have. So remind me, this is currently one parcel, and we're just separating off.
So, this down to, you can see the quarter line there, like the white line. So that was all one piece. The reason they're actually plating this as a larger piece is to connect it to a small portion in that quarter that can't just sit by itself, it would have to get rezoned to be able to sit by itself. So combining those two pieces is one objective of this. And then that lot would get divided from kind of the corner there.
Okay. Okay, so I guess my, my question is gonna be, is there an existing entitlement to build on this spot today?
Yes, good point. Of course, then you get two.
Right, so we're creating two, but today, there's already an entitlement in this spot.
Yes.
But we are creating two.
We would create an additional entitlement, yes. And I guess that's a, that's a good point because the terrain here is difficult. It slopes way down, that's probably one, one of the only spots you could put a house in that area, so that's something to think about.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Natalie, Mr. Isaac. Is there a better warning statement that could be put on the plot instead of the one that's presented here? I mean, there's no way we're in a, the county and the city can ever duck liability. Well, the way this is, I don't think is enforceable, but there should be a warning label. They are across the road from that landfill.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zach Meyer, I guess, the intention, I think, of the covenant wasn't so much to skirt liability. And it's a good point you're bringing up, for sure. I think the intention was more so about nuisance, not, not damage, you know, which would be a liability issue or environmental cleanup, things like that. More so just garbage and road maintenance would be more so the intention, just not getting special attention for nuisance maintenance, as opposed to liability. You're not gonna skirt liability with something like that. And the, so if you put, you know, like you say, the big red warning label, generally, we don't like to put on plaits conditions that may change. I mean, yes, 25 years is a very long time. But I mean, we do have plaits from longer ago than that, and we still reference them, which is also why we don't put setbacks on plaits because that can change over time. So the reason to have a separate document is exactly what you're saying, that big red warning label that comes up in a search, title search for that quarter, that location, so that anyone who's searching for records on a property would be warned. And, you know, it just says, this property at this moment in time that this document is recorded is across the street, or across the road from the landfill, so be on notice. So that is an alternate location for that warning would be in a recorded document.
Would it have to be called a covenant, then?
It could be just called an agreement, it could be called, I mean, it's hard to know what to call it. I mean, you can also, you can record anything. If you want something recorded, you can take it to the recorder and they will record it. It's a public, just public information. I know, for example, up by Harmon Lake, the Water Resource District recorded a warning in each quarter. You know, notice that here's this dam, just in case you didn't know. As you do your record search, your title search, you are now aware that this is downstream of a dam. So it's kind of for information, giving information, regardless of what title you call it. I guess I'm not so sold on the idea of that it has to be a covenant, but just more so some kind of recorded document that states that this is the case.
It seems like it should be more of a, like a memorandum of understanding. Yeah, or some sort of notice. Yeah, Mark, let's let Mark respond to Andy's question.
Commissioner Mark Isaacs with Independent Land Surveying. The only thing I would add, if you're going to put a notice on there, is to, is to put a notice and record it in a separate document, but along with that, put, put the note on the plat and reference that document. So you could put a note right there that says, you know, this is, this is a landfill area, and see the recorded document and instrument number, such and such.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, quick question again.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Would it be possible to have that type of document and put this off to the next meeting? To look at that document? Would that cause any type of, uh, problem for the developer to come up with that document for the next meeting?
So, Andy, I guess the only thing I would say to that is, I think my recommendation is we should set what we want that document to be, and they can't record it until they provide a document that meets those constraints, right? So I, I mean, I, I think it's still on the table, what you're proposing, but at the very least, I think we can lay exactly what we wanted to include. Yeah, come up to the microphone, Mark.
I guess that would be my opinion. I would rather you guys put that together, and then however that's formulated, if the applicant doesn't agree with it, then we can come back at that time, I guess. So I would, I agree, I think if you're going to approve something with that recommendation, then put that together and see if they agree with it. Because I, I guess I see it as you're imposing that, it's not really a mutual agreement, right?
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, so I understand that what we're getting back to this, this part here that relates to Andy's concern, if we would say that the applicant will have to record a notice that states this here, and then there has to be, if I understand, a reference to this notice, how would that be worded there?
Um, I don't think that you have to put that in your motion. We've done this before, where it's just simply a convenience for anyone who's doing title work, just like a, a note that says, "reference document number X." That can happen with or without the suggestion of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can take care of that if that is the desire of the board, and I think it's a good...
So that'd be separaneous to, to the motion?
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea. We do that a lot, to reference on the plat, a separate document.
Okay, thank you.
Natalie, so the way this is written, we would require that of Lot 2 only?
Just Block 2, Lot 2.
Okay, and that's how we would want it to be? It's not Lot?
The ag lot, right, I, I mean, um...
I guess, so I really like the, the concept here and what we're trying to do with the buyer beware. I'm struggling a little bit with the sort of typical slippery slope of, like, where are we drawing the line? This does seem exceptionally close to a landfill, so I, I'm not that worried about it, but...
Yeah, I think it's more so that you're designating it specifically for residential use when you rezone it. So that's the, you know, the expectation is that it is suitable for residential use, whereas an ag property, maybe you build a house on it, maybe you graze your cattle, maybe you hay it or whatever. You know, it's not always the case that you're gonna build a house on it. So that would kind of be the difference, you're not making an implied guarantee that it is fit for building a residence on, I guess. Especially because that's what it was zoned before. There's no change there.
Right. Okay, other thoughts from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I kind of, you know, definitely not an engineer or an attorney, but how would this statement fulfill a warning or understanding agreement to be recorded in a separate document with the plot informing all concerned that the Mandan landfill is located immediately west of this plot? Would that be sufficient?
I guess what I would say is, if the commission want, is amenable to the idea of a separate document being recorded, let staff kind of come up with something and we can run it by you, you know, to make sure that you are happy with it. Or between, between staff and the applicant and whoever else, state's attorney's office, you know, that we would need to call in and come up with something. I, I guess I wouldn't necessarily say you have to put the exact wording in the motion because that could take some crafting. But, but to have direction about, you know, what type of, whether it's a covenant, a warning, you know?
I mean, it sounds like our desire is for the covenant or notice to flag that the property is adjacent to the landfill, and to note, clarify that they will not be given special assistance by the county.
Right.
Right? Andy, are you good with that? Just letting Natalie?
And then it would be about having the meeting, then to finally do it. Otherwise, it goes to the county commission. Because how would we, as a board, be able to see that document? And not violate open meeting law?
Right.
I mean, I think I would, I would be comfortable if we give you what we want it to include. You work with the owners, ahead of taking it to county commission, or honestly, I would be okay if it was just a contingent, contingency of recording the plat.
Right.
I don't think I need to see it again if it's gonna be, if it's gonna cover those items. Would you be okay with that, Andy?
Well, that would give you, next meeting is March 13th?
Right.
Would you have a statement ready by then?
We can make it happen, I think.
And then the county commission can decide whether they like the statement or not. And then it'll be their decision, you know, again, approve, deny, approve if you want to. Or send it back to Planning and Zoning for further review.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. If, if something can't be agreed upon by then, we can come back here, but otherwise, let's try to avoid that. Ready to make that motion, Andy?
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing.
Yeah, go up to the... This does impact you, so I'll let you speak.
Just, again, the verbiage that you guys want, I guess if you guys can write that up, like Mark said, and as long as we are in agreeance with it, and then it can go to county so we don't have to drag this thing out any further. But when you guys are making that decision also, Pat just built out there... Were you out there two years, Pat? Pat just built the house out there, and where his house is versus where our proposed house would be is 200 yards. I mean, I don't think there was a issue back then or whatever, so just make sure we all consider the circumstances, you know what I'm saying? I mean, how big a can of worms do you want to open? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I understand your guys' concerns about the landfill or whatever, you know, but, so...
Yeah, makes sense. Thanks.
I'll make a comment to that piece. I've done just a few quick researches in other locations from other states and other areas. Most places don't allow building next to a landfill within 500 to 1,000 feet. So because your lot isn't 500 feet away, that's a big difference versus where Pat's is. That 500 feet, 500 to 1,000 is what other, other planning and zoning and other locations around the United States have set. Set, you can't build within 500 to 1,000 feet of a landfill.
So is that the actual structure or is that the lot?
That's the actual structure. So, looking at that shorter distance of 500 feet, Pat's house would be outside of that versus where yours would sit.
Right, and we would be outside of that also. The lot is not, but the, the structure would be.
Right, that's what I was looking at, that's what I was looking at, the lot sizes, the right-of-ways and all that stuff. You definitely can get outside of that.
Absolutely.
But because that lot is within that 500 feet, you're gonna want to warn people.
Right.
You're there, you're right.
And I, we don't, yeah, and I appreciate that. And I mean, we don't have a problem with the warning on there. I'm, I mean, we're, you know what? We're, I mean, I, I understand what we're getting into, you know what I'm saying? I mean, with garbage and, you know, tails and, and whatever, you know, so, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody ready to make a motion?
I'm working on something.
I see ya.
See if it fulfills the poetry. Mr. Chairman, would you be ready for... Mr. Chairman, would you be ready for a motion?
I am.
Ms. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision known as SHOC subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on Lot 2, Block 2 only. As the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and reasonably conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045, comprehensive plan with the following condition. A warning statement be included in a separate document informing all concerned that the Mandan landfill is located immediately west of this plot.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Aye!
Item number three.
Our next item is the White Oak Ranch subdivision. This is in the southeast quarter of Section 11, Township 139, Range 83 West. This is located, this is 139A. Crown Butte Lake is like a section or two that way. The applicants are Jason Frank and Pat Kosky. They own an agricultural lot, and they are looking to split approximately six acres off and rezon to commercial. Their intention is to establish a wedding event venue there. So, there are existing structures. This is a single-family home. They have outbuildings here. They would be looking to build another structure behind those buildings. The, so, it was difficult to know how to process this. Because of the residents there, the county doesn't allow residential structures in a commercial zone, but we do allow them if they were already there. We allow them to remain there if you rezon to rural, commercial. But then, an event center isn't allowed by right in a rural, commercial zoning. You have to get a special use permit. So, there's no best fit for this. The applicants want to turn that residence into a caretaker unit, and down the road they had ideas for maybe bed and breakfast type thing for guests, and the commercial zoning would definitely be the appropriate zoning for that. So, staff advised them to just present this as a commercial rezoning. The water situation, there is a water line that runs by here. There's power that's available, a single-phase only, not three-phase power. There wasn't a record, a very good record on the septic system. They said that they would plan to camera that separate, septic system and make any upgrades before they would start the business. Staff would direct them to do a whole site plan before they come back next month for their second phase of the hearing, so that we can see where parking would go, where the septic, better idea of where the septic system is or where it would need to be, so that further consideration can be given to that next, next month. The road commission, staff presented this to the road commission. They didn't have any major concerns, just wanted to make sure that there will be adequate parking on site, which there will have to be. We have standards for that in the code. The applicant did say that they intend to run a shuttle service. Certainly, this is on, it's on gravel, so dust is a consideration. They said that they would be, again, running shuttle service from the designated hotel in Bismarck Mandan out to the site, so that they could cut down on so many vehicles having to park there. There is an applicant's statement narrative in your packet. I didn't reiterate that in the staff report, you can just read that separately. So, that's a view of the existing structures. So, it's the residents and then outbuildings. And it is relatively flat, so in terms of parking, that should work fine. That's looking east. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat and the rezoning, and I can take any questions you may have.
Questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, Natalie, is the primary event activity supposed to be weddings?
Correct. That's the focus. And we do, so they have an agricultural, a conforming agricultural lot. The county does allow wedding events on agricultural properties as an agrotourism use, but we limit those events to 200, it can't go over 200 guests at one time. And if you have a wedding event center, in all likelihood, you're going to want to have more people, capacity for more people than that. So, again, that was why staff suggested moving to a commercial zoning.
Other questions for Natalie? Natalie, just one thing, I'll note, I mean, if it's a 500 guest venue, we, it's not really our jurisdiction, but I think it's pretty safe to say that the existing residential septic system wouldn't suffice.
Definitely not.
So...
Yeah, I think they know, they know they're going to have some work to do. Oh, and that, I guess I didn't mention that, so in terms of fire suppression, which will have to happen, you know, obviously, it's Missouri West Water, and we've had this conversation with other applicants who wanted to do a wedding event venue. They have to have, you know, a tank on site, and instead of relying on Missouri West Water to provide that, they would have to have a pressurized, like a pump, something to create pressure, and they would truck in, they said they probably would truck in that water and just hold it on site for, specifically for that purpose.
Any other questions for Natalie?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there was another one of these that was proposed.
South of town?
Yep.
Yep, and then it all, then there wasn't there all of a sudden about the possible have to put in a sewage lagoon for the number of people that were there.
Your memory, your memory is better than mine.
Yeah, that, that was, kind of came up with an issue in that, in that theater building, that's no longer a theater building, west of town. That got brought up too, and they had to rein in their plans. And then it was the sprinkler system and the ice machines, and the other wedding venue pretty well died because there wasn't enough water for all of that. So, how big they make this thing, is it going to require a sewage lagoon?
That would all be addressed on the site plan, wouldn't it, Natalie?
Yeah, and I think the thing that they have going for them, that that other site did not, is that other site was essentially a ditch. I mean, it's, that other one was kind of a bowl. You don't have a lot of good places to put a septic system. Here, they have a lot of flat acreage that they can work with to put in a lot of runs, but, you know, certainly, if they don't have room for the amount of runs that they would need, they'll have to, they would have to work with Western Plains to come up with a solution to make that viable. They do have a really well-established tree row, which I like, that kind of, well, buffers them from the north side, doesn't buffer from the south side because that's open to the road and the interstate, but, you know, could potentially, yeah, I don't know, I think they, they have a better situation for sure than that other example.
I guess the other concern I have on that, along those lines, would be making sure emergency management, real fire are involved for egress, and emergency planning for evacuations and things like that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Second call for the hearing. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Isaacs, adjoining landowner. Had a question for the applicant. Is, is it planned to be a open venue or a closed building venue or a combination of the both? I'm just curious about noise, which, if it's good band, then I want it to be open, so then I can hear it.
Natalie, do you have any insight on that?
Do we have, no, shoot, yeah, we can find that out before, well, and in addition, asking for a full site plan, that would, that should be part of it to understand what type of building they want to put on there.
Imagine we'll want to know some of those things, right? Noise, hours of operation.
Well, and that's the thing, when you zone to full commercial, you just get to do, you know, you, anything that's allowable, or well, you know what? I take it back. We do. We did set standards for event center, and we might have hours in there that are in the, yeah, I'll have to refresh and we'll bring it back. We'll bring it back.
Yeah.
For next month.
Good enough.
We did, we did make a whole section for specific use, uses for event, or use standards for event center, so, but whatever is in the code as those standard uses would be, what would be allowed by right.
Okay, third and final call for the hearing. I'll close the hearing. Thoughts from the commission, motions?
And, Mr. Chairman, again, this is a preliminary, because we have another, we'll have another hearing on it next month.
Mr. Chair, I just do want to point out that I do think, as in other applications that we've had that are similar, they do have a lot of homework to do. My biggest concern is that septic system. I do think it's going to require a North Dakota DEQ permit, so...
For 500 people, yeah.
Yeah, so they've got a lot more homework to do, I think. I don't know where they're going to put it.
And I don't think we, we don't need an approved DEQ permit for our site plan, probably, right?
No, I'm just pointing out that they've got a lot of homework.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because I didn't have that in mind, and I will relay that to the applicants.
Yeah, I'm sure Lana's already aware of it.
Well, so Lana looked at this plan, you know, I guess she's probably not thinking about it necessarily in terms of numbers, but she said they definitely are going to need to know where the runs are going, you know, a site plan, basically.
Yeah.
So that we, they, they know where they would put everything.
Yeah, Natalie, it's in, in your packet, it feels much gentler than in the letter that says 500, 500 guests for events, right? Which I don't think is in your...
Oh, their, their letter.
In their letter.
Yes.
Right, which, I think your application makes it feel a little bit more like a caretaker house with...
They're building, I mean, they're building a whole new building into the trees behind those other outbuildings that are there.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, along with that, Natalie, I'd also pose the question to the applicant as well, are they going to allow things like campers? Because I know that there are other venues out there that you can go to and you can bring your camper.
So, our standards for event center don't speak, I mean, that's not part of it.
Right.
That would be campground.
Right.
But, I'd have to look back at, I think campground, yeah, is a separate use that is probably allowed in commercial.
Just pointing out that, you know, making sure the applicant is aware...
Yeah.
Of what the rules are.
Yes.
I want to move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the long-form subdivision known as White Oak Ranch subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to commercial, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and the use is adequately distanced from neighboring residential properties.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's, you know, that's the preliminary. This doesn't, the preliminary doesn't go to the County Commission. For the most part, they have fulfilled the regulations, but I don't see them having this ready in a month to bring back here for a final, at all. And if it was, they kept back in a month and there wasn't anything more than this, then there'd be definite issues. But the last one, I mean, there's lots smarter people than me on the Morton County Water Board, and they started rattling off statistics about the amount of water per 500 guests, the amount of toilet, I mean, they had it all, and that there was just no way there was going to be enough water to back up that facility. And then, another time when there was a facility, when Commissioner Steve Keelan was still on here, he brought up fire code. And that opened up a whole nother one, because you couldn't get enough water there to run the sprinkler system, you had to have it with the size of the facility and the number of people they were going to have in it. So, right now, yep, I could vote for this, but if they had this ready in a month, boy, that's going to be a huge undertaking.
And, Mr. Chairman, we do let applicants, like, if they're not ready by the immediately following month, they can bring the second part back when they are ready.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye!
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
That's all we have.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.